All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Isani City Council to order. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, looks like we've got, before roll call, we need to swear in a new council member.
New?
Well, sort of, sort of new, from appointed to elected.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jeff Holmgren.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Minnesota.
Of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
Of councilmember.
Of councilmember.
Of the city of Isani.
Of the city of Isani.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations, Jeff. During our roll call, we have all members present. Do we have any public comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to adopting our agenda.
Mayor and council, we did have an addition, a request to add business item L three, which is board commission attendance discussion.
I had a question on that, though, and is that something we can discuss, given that notice was given to us? I mean, tonight?
If you're asking if any action could be taken to remove someone, I would say maybe not likely, but if a discussion on attendance in general, that could occur.
All right. All right, so I'll look for a motion then to adopt the agenda with the changes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Let's see, moving on to approval of the city council meeting minutes from November sixth, 2024, and the canvas board meeting from November twelfth, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. For announcements, we have canceled the park and recreation board meeting for Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, and our city offices are closed Thursday, November twenty-eighth, and Friday, November twenty-ninth, in observance of Thanksgiving. We have the city council meeting coming up on Tuesday, December third, at seven P M. And we have the E D A meeting Tuesday, December third, immediately following the city council meeting. Do we have any council committee reports?
I had a B M X meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we were talking about the rental agreement and everything. So slowly moving along, but we're moving along. I think they have to have another meeting with staff. So, we're working on it.
I attended the C I H S school board meeting, and it was relatively uneventful. I have had some concerned, I guess, messages about stuff at the Arts and Science Academies. So next month, I plan to attend their meetings. I know we talked about, I'm gonna kind of rotate between the two school board meetings. And Chamber of Commerce meets tomorrow morning, so next meeting, I'll have an update on that, if there's anything pertinent.
Any other council committee reports?
Our district meets tomorrow night, so.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to our first item of business then, L one, resolution to consider awarding a quote for the R F P to tighten and replace the bolted connections on the interior roof of the Isanti indoor arena.
Good evening, mayor and council. Two quotes were received by the deadline on October twenty-first of 2024. Staff is recommending awarding the responsible low bidder, Mine Art Construction LLC, with a bid of forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, who will also provide a five-year warranty on the workmanship. And I believe the contractor is here, if you have any questions.
So Chase, did you have any, yeah, come on up. I know he's got some questions.
If you could just state your name and address for the record there.
Chase Minor, owner and operator of Minor Construction LLC, address three one six four nine Palm Street of Cambridge.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions regarding the contract and the timeline. I received a calendar from Stephanie, and the only problem I see with the calendar is there's no dates, or there's no times on any of it. So, and I'm trying to complete this job within a month. And I don't know if practice is at one o'clock or seven o'clock at night. So I just want to clarify some of those.
I do want to clarify that we did speak with the city attorney, and he did recommend closing for the duration of the project, which is unfortunate. But just for liability issues, if anything were to happen on the track or anything dropped, it would help with your liability as well as the city's, if somebody were to get injured in any way.
That would make my job a lot easier.
And might speed up how fast you could do it.
I'd have to work around another person's schedule, and we should be in and out of there quicker and faster.
How long are you thinking?
Well, I originally planned one month of fifty-hour weeks, since two hundred working hours. Now, depending on whether or not I can get that done or make, you know, work longer days, that's gonna change how fast, hopefully three weeks.
I think we've, we've got folks from Rum River B M X here, too. I guess I'd like to hear on, you know.
You're not happy about closing now for a month.
Can't be good to say, yeah, let's close for three weeks, right? Yeah.
I mean, my biggest question is, I mean, when is practice on Tuesdays?
So mostly events are in the evening, so, you know, like five to three thirty, five to eight.
Okay.
And then right now, the winter schedule is going, so we're waiting on weekends to.
No, that, that doesn't affect me at all. It's just, there's no times on my calendar here. What's coaching clinic?
So basically, all of that during the week, from five to nine.
Okay, and then can I work during coaching clinic?
It might be a possibility.
Okay. Wednesdays rental.
I would say the city attorney would greatly disagree with allowing work to happen while it was open. And I know that was discussed previously, that we would not be able to be open during that timeframe, just for liability purposes. They don't, I mean, he recommended not even being open at all during this timeframe. So definitely not when work is being.
Could there, could there be a compromise on just maybe the weekends? The Rum River B M X is allowed to do their thing if Minor's not gonna be working there? I think that's probably the.
I won't, yeah, I won't be working there any weekends. Unless time needs to allow it. If, if I'm running a tight schedule, I mean, we can have that approved and work around. What, what does a normal weekend race day look for you? Is it eight A M. to?
Yeah, I mean, it could go, usually they get there around ten or so, and then, you know, racing. It depends on how many people show up. Now, there's not a set number, but who shows up that day may go even from three to five.
Okay.
So I guess I would be okay with allowing Rum River B M X to do their thing on the weekends and then not during the week. I, I think that's probably the reasonable compromise. And, I mean, I don't see how the attorney could have a problem with people in there when he's not working. So that's, that's my two cents on it.
We would have to make sure that we include some sort of clause about equipment, storage, and also making sure that Rum River B M X is not allowing anyone on that equipment or what they're gonna do. We want to make sure the track is cleaned up, so we have no liability if there's a bolt that's on the track that were, injures someone. We don't want to be held responsible for that, or other items that we're unaware of. Loctite gets stripped, I'm not sure, just.
Absolutely. I did have a concern on equipment, storage. And I know that I'm responsible for moving bleachers out of the way.
That would be, excuse me, sorry, the city would take the responsibility of moving the bleachers, if it's necessary.
The city will move the bleachers?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Well, that takes care of that.
Why was the contract wrong on that?
The contract did say the city would make the, move this, move the bleachers. But when we discussed it, we misspoke in our conversation. But it was, it is in the original R F P as well, that the, the city will be removing, are moving the bleachers. So we'll have to, the bleachers will have to get re-inspected before use is allowed. So if they're needed to be moved back in, that would be something we'd have to consider, unless they can, we did discuss at our meeting that they could bring in chairs for the, during that timeframe, if you guys were gonna consider allowing it to be opened.
Does Rum, does Rum River B M X need the bleachers during the week, or just on the weekends?
We can get by if they were moved, you know, people could bring in chairs, you know, stay on, we need that.
I don't, I don't recall how big the bleachers were, but I can't imagine. I mean, I can work with you, and if I gotta do that section on a Monday, have the bleachers moved out and get moved back in hopefully on a Friday. I don't know how quick the city can have that happen, but I'm willing to do that. I don't have to have, you know, the bleachers out for three weeks.
They're fairly large bleachers, so maybe we can take them up a bit.
Okay.
How many people are at the events during, during the weekend, on the average?
Weekends are gonna be bigger than during the week because it's racing and practice. Five hundred to a thousand people, it'd be, you know, depending on what event we're doing, what they, you know, they're wanting to work in. We have a few bigger events sprinkled through all the next couple of months.
Can, can you have the, the kids that are using the track before the events on Saturdays and Sundays, walk the track from front to back and make sure the construction crew didn't miss any nuts or bolts or sharp pieces of metal or whatever may fall from the ceiling?
Check the section of the track anyway that they get there, so.
He could, he could, he could get a rolling magnet that just rolls on the track and it could pick up any metal. So, that's not uncommon on any construction site.
These nuts are not small.
No, they're not. No, I know, but still, it's, it's, it's something you could miss, trust me.
I do want to, I guess the building official is here, so we could have him weigh in, how he feels about the opening of the track on the weekends, too. Just, that's, sorry to put you on the spot, but.
I can certainly see the benefit of separating and making sure that there's not work activity while there's people at meetings. Absolutely. But if you do a sweep before your last day of work, before they come in on the weekends, you know, I understand the theory of maybe, you know, be preferable to not having that wait. But at least then you can allow both users. And I thought I'd be there pretty much every day, you know, so we could work that out.
So that was another question I had. Why, who pays for you to be there every day? And why is that, is that something that you would like to pursue?
Well, thank you for that. And.
Andy, can you come up to the microphone?
Yeah.
You want, you want to sit in this chair, too? That's okay.
Thank you for the question, mayor and council. And we did, Steph and I did talk about a couple of different scenarios about how to provide that oversight. Is a permit required? And how much help do we need to provide for that? And I settled on being basically re-officing there. I mean, there's plenty of tables and chairs, so I can do my office with my computer essentially anywhere that I am. So we're not going to incur, the city and the contractor or B M X is not going to incur any additional costs in that regard. Simply, I decided to office there instead of my office in St. Francis during this project, just to make sure that there's no more hiccups.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
I guess, for me, I, if I was a contractor and I had the building official wanting to sit there the whole time, I would feel a weird type of way about it. It's like a, it's like we, we're hiring somebody, but then we're not trusting. It just feels a little, I, I'm not sure how to feel about that.
I don't see it that way.
Okay.
If I might, we're, we're a partnership. You know, I'm not there to knuckle down on anybody.
Okay.
Me doing this work without compensation should demonstrate that.
You're right, nah.
I'm fine, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Originally, the original contract, the R F P made it sound like I had to request time with him to make sure I could work under certain hours, and it doesn't sound like that's it, so.
Okay.
With B M X track requiring, wanting evening practices and coaching clinic all in the evening, I should be able to work around all that.
Okay.
So it's really not a concern for me.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because that was something that seemed a little off. But now it makes sense now that you say that. I was like, who's paying for that? Okay, yeah.
The question I had was the permit, because in, in this, in a sense, the city's acting as a general contractor, and they're subcontracting it out. So that was another question, is if I had to pull permits for this job to be completed with the building official being there.
If I might, mayor and council, this is more of a repair, not new construction, so a permit isn't necessarily applicable.
Okay.
But since this is such an odd situation, I wanted to make sure to be available to, to make sure that we can look around the corners and see any difficulties that might be there.
It is a weird deal, isn't it?
It is. And Chase did buy a torque wrench that will map out every single bolt and the torque spec on every bolt and nut. So that's.
That is in the contract, that I'll provide a digital spreadsheet of every single bolt that's tightened.
Okay.
So we'll know that it's all tight.
Sure. Awesome, and I suppose I probably should have everybody, Chase, I got you, but state your name and address for the record, I suppose, and.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. Andy Schrader with Rum River Consultants.
Thank you.
Tim Dobosinski, one oh one, Isani Parkway.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, so, so if I'm understanding correctly, you're gonna kind of hang out, you're gonna do the work. We're gonna do the work kind of in the off days that would normally be practice. And there won't be anybody there from Monday through Friday, essentially, or Monday through Thursday? Or what do you, when you say weekend, what do you mean by weekend? And?
The best possible outcome would be if they were working during the day. We could still operate at night and the weekends, you know.
Okay.
Our, our biggest concern was loss of income for an entire month, being a nonprofit. And also, too, that, that's gonna take a huge chunk out of our track points, which, you know, we're always working to be the number one track in the country, so.
Is there, is there a time of year that's like the off season per se for you guys? Or there really is no off season, is there?
Summer and December fifteenth through the thirty-first are really, I mean, the December thirty-first to the, or fifteenth to the thirty-first is the only time that we're not operating at all. You know, that's typically when we do our track rebuild, stuff like that. You know, there's nothing going on there but a couple of us there doing, you know, cleanup and getting ready for the next season.
That worked for your schedule, that timeframe?
Not very well. I plan to be in there January, February. So, but, I mean, it sounds like most of your weekends or weekdays are at five o'clock.
Correct, yeah.
I can work around that.
Okay.
And if we have to cancel something, I can talk to you guys, and we can work around that.
Yeah, I mean, if, if something comes up and there's something going on where, you know, it's just not possible, we can cancel an event that day, you know, as long as the city attorney's gonna be okay with that. You know, obviously, we want to work with everybody on this and still be able to operate is our main goal.
We did discuss at the staff level the need to waive some of the rent, rental fees for any amount of percentage of time that was required for closure.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, the leases, you know, they give us money and they have access to a, a building. And to the extent that they don't have access on certain days, they need to be prorata discounted.
Yeah.
Just automatic, not a, not an ask.
No, is that discounted out of my bid?
No, 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 no. He's just talking about the rent coming from Rum River B M X to the city, yeah.
That, that is on us. We, if we can't provide the building, they can't, can't make them pay rent on the days they can't use it, so.
Yeah.
Fortunately, your bid was competitive, so, or good, so it helps with some of that stuff at the city level. So I appreciate the, the fair bid on that.
Awesome. Any other questions, guys? It sounds like we've got a, a plan. I mean, I think, I would just ask that you guys all kind of get together with, with Rum River B M X and, and all of you guys just make sure we're communicating with each other, so we don't step on anybody's toes and, you know. Primarily, we don't want to put you, Rum River B M X, out, you know, any more than we absolutely have to. So a lot of, a lot of people are counting on you guys being there every night, and, you know, it's, we don't want to do that, so.
We will schedule a pre-construction meeting with city staff, Mr. Schrader and Rum River B M X. We'll let you know as soon as we set that date, and we'll all be there to make sure that we're on the same page and moving forward at the right pace.
Tell Joe we're sorry. Yeah. All right, we still need a motion, I guess, unless you guys have any other discussion or, well, we can discuss after the motion, too, but.
Motion to approve the bill estimate.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Thanks for coming in there, guys. Yeah. All right, the next one's L two. Resolution to consider, very many of them. Declaring a vacancy on the city council. Temporarily fill the vacant Isani City Council seat by appointment and call for a special election.
Yeah, so with the canvassing of the results that we had last week on November twelfth, we do and will have a vacancy on our council as well. So Mayor Gordon will be with this resolution, creating a vacancy at the, of the city council with a date of resigning from his seat, December thirty-first of 2024. That does leave two years or more remaining of his term. So by city code, we do have a special election. The special election dates are before you within the resolution, as well as an interim appointment timeline, because the vacancy will be left for a gap of time. Statute doesn't say when and for how long you have to have an interim appointment, but you do have to fill with an interim appointment, so the date's before you for that. And that will occur pretty quickly, follow the city code procedure and process, which we've done in the past. Does fill for the interim seat by December seventeenth. The special election, we may have a, a primary with that, so we do account for those dates. And the election would actually, special election would take place in August of 2025.
Thank you. And I just, if you guys don't mind, I just wanted to say a few words, but I, ever since coming on the council here, and Steve was here, of course, for that, Luke was here, actually, too.
You got the seat, you bugger.
Appointed in 2019, I just, I've enjoyed every minute of my time serving in, in this role and, and as a councilman as well. And it's, it's been an honor to serve the people of Isani. And we've got, I think, the greatest staff in all of the state. I mean, you guys, nothing gets done without you guys, and, and we, we're really, really lucky as a council to have you guys here, and, and thank you for everything you guys have done for, for me. And it's been a huge help along the way of, you know, doing this job, for sure, so. And this council, I mean, you guys are, are researched and, and you spend time thinking about what you're gonna do. Most of the time, you think about what you're gonna say before you say something, most of the time, but not always. But I think it's been incredible, the amount of things that we've been able to accomplish as a council. And, and I'm not going anywhere, so, you know, I'm just a phone call away if there's ever anything I can do for you. And I'll be serving, you know, just in a different, a different capacity, and, but still serving the residents of Isani, so. So, anyway, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you guys and to the staff and to the residents of Isani, and, and appreciate, appreciate the opportunity, so.
I remember Mayor Gordon, the day you walked in and applied to fill that vacant seat, and you were actually unanimously picked to fill that seat.
No, no, I wasn't, I wasn't. Paul Burnley voted against me.
Was he?
Yeah.
That's, that's, I can't remember, Paul, you never know what Paul's gonna do, so.
Well, what's even funnier is I, him and I ended up voting on a lot of things together. Well, he voted for Leroy, actually, so you can't blame him for that.
Well, you never know what was gonna come out of him, but, yeah. It's a diverse council, always has been.
Yeah. Yeah, we've had a lot of fun and have done a lot of good things.
It has been great. You're, yeah, it's gonna be some big shoes to fill, so, in that mayor's seat.
Yeah. Well, I'll make the motion for this one. Let's see, so we probably could approve all this together, I would assume, huh? So I'll make a motion to declare the vacancy and to do a temporary appointment and to call for a special election.
Motion. Yep, second, yeah, Jeff said it.
I have a motion for myself to declare the vacancy, a temporary appointment and a special election. I have a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero.
You don't make very many motions. That was a powerful one.
No, I figured I could do that one.
Yeah.
And then we had, in addition to the agenda, was L three, which was attendance at planning meeting, is what we want to call that one, I guess?
Yeah, so board and commission attendance was requested to be discussed. I'd like to just share in chapter eight of city code, we do have the, what constitutes an absence and how that affects the board or commission for both planning commission and the park boards. So I'll read both of those, if you would like. For planning commission, it states, absence from any three meetings in a twelve-month period unless excused in advance by the chair constitutes a vacancy. And then goes on to say how you'd fill it. And for park and rec board, it states, no more than three absences of any kind, whether excused or unexcused, shall be permitted in a twelve-month period. Absence for more than three meetings constitutes a vacancy.
So my question is, you said that the, the chair of the board has to approve of that absence, correct?
That's for planning commission, correct.
And did you know about any of these absences beforehand? Has there been more than three that you haven't known about?
Depends on how you define beforehand, I guess. I mean, and, and I'm not great about checking my messages either, and so, I mean, it's, you know, I mean, I found out tonight, prior to the meeting, when, when we were notified, so. But that doesn't mean, I'd, I'd have to go check my email, I guess, and see if there was something that came in prior to that. But that really doesn't define how far in advance notice has to be given. And so, so I would say that, that, that notice would definitely cover that absence, I would say, right? According to the way it's written there.
That has been the precedence that we've been using for all people on the planning commission and the park board.
I, I agree with you, Luke, to that. He was told once before that.
Once before?
It was before you were here.
Oh, yeah.
That it's, he's got to start attending. In all fairness, he has been notifying of, of it. But I still think we need to have that conversation with him before we proceed any further with it. I think we need, he needs to attend the next meeting. For all fairness, he needs to attend the next meeting. He needs to be notified of that, so we can have that conversation with him. I, I think we've been fair enough with it. At least he's notifying them. He's notifying somebody. If I know I'm gonna be late or I'm not gonna make it, I will call Ms. Wood, and I will also call the mayor. And there's, unfortunately, what I do for a living, three o'clock comes, if I'm not done, I ain't making it. That's, that's why the five o'clock meetings are tough for me. This time of year, it's really bad. So, but I will notify both parties if I can. That's me. Maybe he needs to address the fact that he needs to notify the chair before he notifies whatever. But I think in all fairness, I think he needs to have that be told to him again. He's not here to defend himself, and I don't think that's fair to do it to anybody unless they're here to defend themselves.
I guess I would.
I don't disagree with you. Trust me, I don't disagree with you, but I think in all fairness, he should be here for that.
So why are those two, I guess I would rather see that the two, the, the planning and the parks and the E D A all have the same policy. Why is it that the planning commission has a different policy than the others, even though it's the same appointment?
The planning commission and the park board do have the same policy, or like, oh.
That's not what Josie just read. So I guess, for me, I would rather just see that we change it, because I don't, I don't think it's fair or right for anybody to just miss every meeting and just say, oh, I'm not gonna be there tonight, and just miss in, in forever. You know, that's kind of what's happened. He's been to maybe four meetings in the last two years, five, maybe, if that. I mean, that's, he's missed probably ten, and I don't think that's, I don't think that's right. There's somebody in the city that would probably like to have that seat and actually contribute to the city. So I think, I guess, if we're not gonna just terminate that right now, I think that we should make the policies match, so that we don't have absence issues, period.
I think he has had two unexcused absences. He, he only needs two, right?
I think it was three.
Three total?
But, but the other boards don't have that. You, you can have three total, inexcused or unexcused. And I don't know why the, for some reason, the planning commission's different than that, and I don't like that.
Well, at a minimum, we should change that.
Yeah, I mean, it is, if you just say before every meeting that you're not gonna be there and covers you, I mean, if you don't, you're not able to be here that often and you're not able to participate and you're not able to contribute, then that's doing a disservice to.
Correct.
To the residents for sure, so, yeah, I mean, I, we probably should look at changing, changing those rules and maybe updating that to, you know, allow for some grace, but at the same time, you know, we have to be here on somewhat of a regular basis at the very least.
Ms. Wood, is there something that states that it has to be excused in Planning Commission?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, but we can definitely look into that.
I think we should.
Answer a question of why the, the two are different in Planning Commission and Park and Rec, I can't answer that either. I, I think that's just how it was said at the time that it was established, and maybe it wasn't realized that there were differences. We can pull up the EDA and see what that language states and try to be consistent among them. I mean, they're all representing the city, and, I mean, we want them to be here, like you say, and, but we do understand that there's reasons why people can't be here as well, so.
But I think three excused or unexcused absences in, in a total of twelve months is plenty, because the Planning Commission doesn't even meet every month, so if, say if there's nine meetings a year or less, I mean, you, you can miss thirty-three percent and you're still good. And if there's some extenuating circumstance, like say I had to go out of town and take care of my aunt or something, well, I don't think council would have a problem with that, but when it's a repeated issue, and we've talked about this for like a year on and off, and it seems like every time it's like, well, he, he called in, he called in, and I, I just don't think it's right, so we, we're gonna have to, I didn't realize also that the, the rules were different for each. Had I known that, I would have pushed for this a long time ago.
Well, I think maybe we bring that to committee of the whole and take a closer look at it.
Can we take any action tonight on council to say we want the, the, the language changed and from here on forward that the, the absences count? That way, we're not pushing this back for the next two months and then he misses another three meetings, I mean.
I would like to review state statute too, to make sure that we're not, you know, going away from what is required of us, because all of the Park Board, the Planning Commission, the EDA, all have different laws from the state, state levels.
That's what I was gonna suggest when they, the next meeting, next council meeting, we should have that on the agenda, and they should have that information by then.
Yeah, and it does look like we can, we definitely will do that, but no, we would not be able to take action, because it is within city code. We have to do an ordinance amendment to be able to deviate from that, from the EDA bylaws. I believe it reads, absence from any commission from any three meetings in a twelve-month period unless excused in advance by the Chair constitutes a vacancy. So that one also has only unexcused, so, but we can definitely look into state statute and see and report back.
Okay.
I just don't understand why he wants to be on, why he wants a seat and he never shows. It just doesn't make sense.
It really bothers me, because there's people in our community that want to get involved, and I, we can't keep kicking the can down the road on this, he's gotten enough grace, so. Alrighty.
All right, any other, uh, discussion on that? Otherwise, we can look at the consent agenda here and.
I'd like to thank Isani Family Dental and Minnesota Aquaman for their gracious donation to Luminate Isani.
Absolutely.
I would dittle that, and I think it's great to see that more and more businesses are getting involved, and I think people are really excited about the free attendance this year. Um, it was paid for by the taxpayers in the first place, and I think it should have been free in the first place, so it's really good to see that, uh, businesses are seeing the value in it, and hopefully they'll get, uh, good returns on their investment, so.
Anything else?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion to accept the consent agenda from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. If you want to take, uh, maybe a.